Thanks for coming on already. Tonight, the whole focus of the board of selectmen is to play a little catch-up on some items tonight. There's nothing dramatic that we need to get into, but we wanted to have it early so that we could entertain the engineers that are coming in to talk about the transfer station, which will be here probably in about 45 minutes. So, in first order of business, we have the minutes of March 21st and March 27th. Do you have a motion?
Do you want to add then do it from 12?
Uh, 8:12 is not good enough.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Steve, that'll let him do that. Steve looks for his RSP 17 report. As you all know, we're getting ready to take a look at the budget. And Jim Conley is recovering from some... Rotavirus?
Rotavirus.
Yeah. So he's out for a few weeks and his replacement is not going to be replaced in the next week. So we'll catch up to... catch up by the time he gets the board of selectmen comes around. We have the senior senator and the municipal agent reports we did done last week. So now we have some correspondence. We had a volunteer in the area of the service have elected a new president, Kim Ian-Freel, who will be replacing Scott Scobee. And so I want to pass on our congratulations to Kim and to the rest of the other commissioners. Okay, as you can notice, there's a category of volunteer groups on the correspondence section on the agenda this evening. And I wanted to do this this evening with the other selectmen because we have some time to discuss the importance of the various volunteer groups that we have working in a town. And also because we have an inquiry from Alan Marimond who brought to our attention that 2054 was in the need of cleaning and suggested that other towns have cleanup crews that they can send out for special occasions. In this particular case, it was the Earth Day that he was concerned about. Fortunately, we didn't have any crews out on Earth Day because it really rained and if you were to fall. But the whole matter of this inquiry brought to light the fact that there are so many projects and so many things that need to be done around town that in most cases fall into the categories of our volunteer groups. But in some cases don't. And I want to talk to the selectmen this evening and perhaps during the public comments section, even get some suggestions from the public with regard to how we can be more proactive in seeking out some of the functions or some of the projects that need to be done around town. And I think you know most of the volunteer groups that we have available, obviously, some of them are the volunteer fire department, veterans, the Women's Auxiliary Fire Department, the Haddon Garden Club, Haddon Lions Club, the Greater Memorial Library, Junior Women's Club, the Senior Citizens, Boy Scouts, the Haddon Volunteers, the Fire Department, excuse me, the Haddon Volunteer Fire Department, Girl Scouts, the Red Cross, the BFW Auxiliary, the Salvation Army, Public Health, the Haddon Volunteer Angels Auxiliary, the Haddon Fair Association, Haddon River Days, the Rod and Gun Club, Grange, Masons, the Historical Society, the Parade Committee, the Sportsman Club, and Village Parks and Knights of Columbus. And this is all a array of wonderful volunteer people that are ready and able to help. We have already coordinated their help for during the future emergency situations. We have a number of folks that are going to be seeking out our help during the season of storms and emergencies. But what we can talk to you about tonight, guys, is how do we reach out, become more proactive to those things that really need help and that we haven't been able to identify? For instance, a couple of months ago, we got the request for a clothing thing. We started to do something with that and the volunteers who had promoted it backed off and we never heard from them. Yeah. So, I mean, but that was a great idea. And so, I mean, so how do we turn that into something that can be done on a regular basis to seek out these types of things? Cleanup crews, parks, and some non-use roads that may need help. A couple of months ago, a few of the churches asked me if they could be able of help to put together some crews to do that kind of thing. And we gave them some names of different groups, but nothing really as materialistic. So I guess I'd like to solicit your ideas. How can we become more proactive in really seeking out some of the people who need help in town and getting help through either through these organizations or creating them, but perhaps a, I don't know, a facilitating center or person group that can take and seek out the groups and bring them to the table? Any ideas?
Well, I think the need publicity that we're looking for help to begin with, that's the first step. In some way, generate a means of publicity that we're trying to do this and see if we can get a quota of people to give and work on.
To identify the projects or the core group in general to tie the functions into these list of volunteers.
I think it's the core group that should tie it together. And then if the group that can handle the specific function, what can we then rock back?
Yeah. Because in the Haddon List magazine about two quarters ago, I put something in there to try to lure more volunteers out and we gave the name of the contact. There's Alice, a contact here in the office. And we haven't really got any... That's about it?
Well, I think, you know, the people who do these type of volunteer work is to... You know, I wish there was more people who did it. I think the only way to, I think, to gas those groups to do more is we got to expand the people and try to expand the people that join these groups. Because these groups all have a function on their own. They're all busy, they're volunteering their time, they're either running an organization or something like that, are already on their own. So, you know, and a lot of times you may see that the same people are on multiple committees. That's the type of person that volunteers. You know, I remember that, for example, I think something, you know, one way would to be is to reward somehow these groups who do do some volunteering, some form of recognition. Remember at one point, we were talking about having a volunteer day? You know, thanks, bringing all those clubs to town with sponsors and kind of volunteer agents and thank them for all the stuff that they do and helping them. And help them to get more volunteers. I know those groups are difficult at the time, getting volunteers. And so somehow, and it seems, if you look at those groups, I know, not, you know, most of those groups that I know the members of, unfortunately, there is a generational that's involved in as well. It seemingly the younger people, or, you know, I say younger, you know, twenties, thirties, are not getting involved in these groups. Seems like Knights of Columbus, Lions, those groups that I know about, Sportsman's Club, things I'm members of, that I'm by far usually the youngest person in that group. So we need to somehow try to get a message forward to the younger people that they need to get involved, the people that are been around for a long time, are doing most of the work, you know, they're getting older, they're all right, and your ability to do things, you know, is more and more difficult. We need to somehow get these younger generation to start to volunteer for these groups. And then, because asking them to do more is probably going to be very difficult. You know, because I know they've overworked already.
Yeah, and they're overworked, they're working too. But we have, with the Haddon River Days coming up, with the 350th anniversary of the town being celebrated at the Haddon River Days on September 8th. Thank you. Would that be something where we could actually hold a separate tent or something or a function to gather people in who are possibly interested in being the forerunners of tying all these groups together? I mean, they don't even have to actually join a particular group. But the object is really because our expenses are getting very, very tight and because a lot of the services that our citizens have grown to depend on are now becoming more difficult to provide efficiently at the kind of cost that maybe they're required. And we have to look for alternative ways to, you know, to take care of their needs. So I think that maybe, you know, if possible, maybe we try to start something with a movement of some type, get it on. Does Haddon volunteer be receptive to helping us do that? Right. So we could start on that way. So anyway, if you could...
I volunteer too much of my time. I really don't have time. You're the...
It's so true. You know, she's joking, but she's active. No, your only thing is that what you did in the paper, that's fine. You know, as I said, continue to do it. Four people's good. Four people in Congress, we just want more people to be involved in my business. More people who are involved. But I can't move an organization that I'm involved in that isn't short of volunteers. Everybody seems to be short of volunteers. So as a community, I think we need to be a little more aware of how to get involved and help, you know, as simple as that, and spend the time.
Okay, when we get to public comments, maybe we can discuss that a little more. If anybody else has any ideas, we can talk about that. Addition to transfers, we do not have any this evening. We have three tax... The first one's for Elizabeth Sullivan for real estate in the month of $28,089. The second one is for George Morale, or, no, Morale, I'm sorry, in the month of $84,068, and that's also real estate. And the third one is for Hall Sibisky in the month of...
What's the first name?
It looks like Hall, H-O-L-L, H-O-L-L, Sibisky. In the month of $16,23, and that's H-O-L-L. Can I get a motion to accept those?
No, wait.
Okay, great. All in favor? Okay, as I mentioned, the agenda's going to be a little bit just like preparation for the informational session. So I did not specifically outline any specific old business. I thought I'd open that up and maybe we could just pick around some of the old business that we're looking at. For instance, now we're waiting for the budget hearings and meetings to be over before we address the public hearing on the Code of Ethics Act, which is one that we want to get to. And also, we still have to work to address the elderly tax, the pay protect... Those are two ones that I think are, as soon as the budget season is over, we can get on to. The loss of our economic development coordinator and the attorney-in-law of our planner has put the land use post under a lot of pressure. So we are trying to tie together some of the things that they had out there that we were working on, but trying to bring them to closure. There's, the main ones we have at this point is the Lisa Lodge has got the Brooks property that she is working on, trying to bring some people in that. It's... And then we have the Rossie property, which was looking at a... They were looking over there at the combination of multiple use, mixed use, excuse me, residential and commercial. I'm not sure where that's going because it doesn't appear to have that much layers with regard to the density there. We have the Molly property, which is next to Pizza, Pizza Molly, and down Pizza.
Yeah, that was...
They had a couple of things working there, one of which...
Gas station.
Yeah, and it hasn't been finalized and they've been working on some other things.
Oops.
Yeah.
The gas station.
Yeah, yeah. And so those are three of the ones. McKenna is for the drugstore and is still sort of waiting to see what's happening on the Rossie property. And of course, he's tied up with a lease on one of his customers there. Maybe it is physically, it's physical therapy, yes, he's tied up on that.
So the Brooks property is for sale? They just try to get people to get it?
No, the Brooks property leases large homes.
She bought?
She bought, yeah. Yeah. Now, it's...
She bought?
Well, it's quite nice.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. So the regulations for the... For the title of the... Actually, the law for the regulations is still being written already. Rossie has got a time plan for the five days that are in the country. But those are some of the things we're trying to keep around this evening. Nothing, not yet. The White House, Duffy is opening up again a restaurant.
Yes?
Yeah. That should be open shortly.
Okay.
And that's part of...
The Eagle Tourism Center?
Yeah, the Eagle Tourism Center, we've done the appraisal on that property. As you will remember, as some of the folks out there will remember, that property was put up for sale several years ago. At a town meeting approved the sale of it at $750,000 to Jeff Rommel. It was put off clean. It was determined that was dirty. The previous administration had to go back to the board to talk with Rommel, who agreed to continue to buy the property and get credit for the remediation, which was about $200,000. That would have required it to go back to a town meeting. It never got that far because part of the agreement was that the potable water had to be brought to the site for the use that Rommel wanted. As it turned out, that never happened and DTH never let him want it. So the deal with Rommel fell through and for several months, with the help of our economic development coordinator who was on board then, we tried to come up with some kind of a leasing arrangement and maybe the law to cooperate. We could not come up with virtually anything that was going to be useful to lease because the property was contaminated, short of coming up with some kind of a trucking operation for contractors equipped or something like that, which would have been not conducive for the villagers. So what we're looking at now is, again, selling the property. We've had an appraisal done on it and we're looking at the appraisal now. I've given a copy of that to the selectmen. We have, we'll be considering putting it out to, for sale, putting it up for sale. So that's where we are with that at this point. All right, as far as the new business goes, we're really excited to have the anchor engineer folks here tonight to tell us about our new business. Even got them a microphone and a screen for you too, as well. But we are looking forward to the budget concluding. This has been a tough, tough, tough budget. We all decided to be as conservative as possible in tightening our belts. And there's only so much that can be done from the selectmen's budget that we have continued to tighten our belt. The corporate finances is more diligently to do what they can to keep the tax rate down. And I think your board may be pleased to hear the results of their efforts at the public hearing. Who knows if you're going to be pleased with the results, but I know you'll be pleased with their efforts because they worked very hard in working on this project.
And the date of that hearing is May 2nd?
May 2nd.
Here.
Is that correct, May 2nd? If that's your meeting, so...
May 2nd, here, at 7:00.
Right, and that's following the town meeting, which is the...
Office 60.
Okay, I'd like to open up for some public comments. Any thoughts? Yes, Mary?
About your volunteerism, you have a great infrastructure set up in your website already. I would suggest doing like a bulletin board of volunteer projects and then send that link to the school especially, because they always have kids who at the end of the year, especially in spring when you need them most for projects, are dying for community service hours. So that'd be a one way to do it. At least it would all be organized on one page on the website. And then I can take from that and post on the Facebook page for the Haddon Bulletin, which goes up immediately to 300 people.
Excellent.
So, yeah.
Excellent, that's great. Thank you. Great, any other thoughts?
Well, it seems to me that, you know, you certainly have a great number of organizations and people involved volunteering in our town. And I think if there are projects that are sort of identifiable, then I think you probably can get the volunteers to carry out a project. I can't, you know, I think the, for example, a clothing, if you will, operation sounds like there was something in mind at some point where people who had really nice clothing that they didn't want to throw out or bring to Goodwill and would prefer to have in town. But if you had, if there were a demonstrated need that's a... I should think that, you know, you might be able to find either some group to adopt or some new group to come together to work on a project, you know, that's our... But I'm not particularly pushing that particular kind of a project, but I think when you can identify a project that needs to be done, it's much easier to get volunteers to come to that project than it is maybe to get people to volunteer for something that is yet unspecified. And so if we can identify projects, I think that would be a great way to go.
Okay. Alan, I see that you're here. This whole discussion of volunteerism was prompted by your suggestion on the Earth Day cleanup of 2054 and the fact that there were, in your observation, other towns that did this type of thing. So it really fostered us to start thinking about, you know, with all the volunteer groups that we have, how can we key into specific projects or specific areas where people can, you know, volunteer? So I appreciate your email, thank you. Any other thoughts?
May it be on a different subject?
Absolutely.
With regard to Midstate Regional Planning Agency and you talked, I think the town voted to, prior to enter this consortium of communities and government agency. I wondered if other towns have joined that? I remember there were only a few at the beginning.
We now have one, which is the ratification number. Okay, RSP 17, we're eleven that have had a resolution. And I went to a meeting today that's going to be called the Lower Valley, Lower River Valley COG, Council of Governments. And they elected the officials of that, the primary groups are putting it together now to create the bylaws, the planning, how the planning organizations are going to work together, where to get the, where the new location is going to be, how the grants or the money's from the state is going to be implemented. Because a lot of this transition is being fostered by the state. So the preparation work has already begun. There will be one more ratification once everyone is on board to actually, when the COG is actually ready to formally. But right now, it's basically a lot of work has been done, preparations for that. It's interesting to note that the Council of Governments may hint of the old county government form of government. And that is not really the case. And I think that's something we have to be careful of. The purpose of the Council of Governments is to band together for synergistic opportunities through planning and services. It is to build on each other's strengths on a regional basis, not to dictate a course or action for any specific town. Even though all the chief legislative officers, all 17 of them have a vote in the patron. As this thing develops and the bylaws are put together, I will share this with you, but there are other COGs in the state that are working very, very well. The problem for Haddon has been as we have fallen into that no man's land between Midstate, which is influenced by Middletown, Norton, Promwell, and Crepeau, which is influenced by Essex, Old Saybrook, Deep River. And in truth, our philosophy runs close to Crepeau. In reality, our allegiance has been to Midstate. And it's always been, you know, a sort of awkward thing. So for us, this is an ideal situation. And I think we could bring a lot to the table too, March, because we sit at the very helm of where this thing is going. Above us, we have the Midstate, below us, we have Crepeau. In the center is where we can really identify that cohesion that's going to be really necessary to make this thing work. So I'm kind of excited about the prospects of it. I think that we're going to get much more efficiency in combining some services. I think we're going to have much more efficiency in implementing some of our planning ideas and sharing them with the COG. I think overall, it's going to be, it's going to be a good thing. It's going to be a little bit of a adjustment because there are people in Lower Valley who really don't fully understand Middletown and Promwell and vice versa. So I think it's going to be a little bit of an adjustment. But Dave Lavassar, who is Mole DM, has been working very closely and putting together everything for us. And it looks like it's going to go together fairly smoothly. The time period is going to be about a year of transition, during which time we will continue to go on with Midstate and utilize their services. But it is pretty well certain it's going to be no more than 12 months before this is put together.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Joe Lorenza. Well, how does this work to benefit Haddon? If we get tied into this and we're kind of in the middle, we're kind of... How, because we don't have any industrial zones at all, so to speak of, how are we going to benefit by joining this and being part of this economic boom, so to speak?
Well, of course, the easiest part of that, of course, is the collection of available of power base to gain grants. See, part of the problem with this, Joe, has been if we didn't line together, the state was cutting up the planning agencies and they wanted to have fewer planning agencies. So that would have meant that we, as Haddon, would have gone either to New Haven or New London. And once you attach yourself to a bigger municipal base like that, you are the last person in line to get any assistance from the state. So what this does is this gives us a mega power, if you will, in being able to negotiate grants, things like municipal grant or LOSE or any of the, many of the things that are available to most municipalities. It gives us a good, healthy base to work with and to lobby for. In a way of communications, it gives us a voice, a larger voice, a stronger voice in heart. And I think that's from a lobbying standpoint, I think that's extremely important. From a regional service standpoint, we can, I can envision us being able to latch on to other towns who have similar needs and similar services. We have just implemented a very, very efficient animal control system, which is so needed in this town. But I'm not sure that if down the road, that efficient system can be aligned with other towns on a more of a regional basis to make it more efficient and cheaper. So I see, I see a lot of that and also in the planning area. We have our own town planner now who basically works within the scope of what our regulations and what our town is requiring in connection with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Well, the regional plan of conservation and development is different than ours. It embellishes some of what we're going to do into a bigger scale. And that is different than the state's. So what we have a better way to do now is to fit in in a more advanced way to get our planning on board and tied into those things that are going to happen in a regional basis. Now, for instance, tourism is our, is one of the biggest things that we can promote here. I mean, you're right, we don't have a big industrial base and we certainly have our infrastructure limitations. But tourism is something we can really, really go after and try to embellish. And I think what this COG does, it opens up those opportunities in every town for us to work with them to enhance that kind of thing. So I see nothing but positive... So I see lots of positive aspects about it. However, I did ask Dave Lavassar today, tell me about the negatives. Tell me about the negatives. What is there out there that we're missing? And he thought for a moment, he said, "Not much." He said, "The biggest thing is communication." He said, "To make sure that you know what, where the other towns are, where their needs are, where they are in direct opposition to your needs, and iron that out. And as long as you can do that, then maybe it's going to work smoothly."
Well, do you feel we're in opposition with any town right now, and why do we need this?
I always got a comment too, in addition to what Paul was saying, is that when we're, in the past, when we're competing for grants and project money and things like that, it's very difficult for Haddon to compete with places like New Haven, Middletown, and New London, because a lot of times they use per capita income, the wealth of the town, and we always come up way too hard. And I mean, especially, then they also, sometimes they'll have a project to which they want some contribution from the town. Again, we don't have the resources. So if they're asking for 60% contribution, 40% contribution, New London, New Haven, they have a lot more money, they have a lot more workers, they have more equipment, you know, and they're asking for shovel-ready products, projects and things like that, we're always, I mean, not always, but most of the time, we're on the short end of the stick. We can't keep up with that when we're competing. At least with these type of towns, we're together, we're kind of like-minded towns, you know, same kind of per capita income type of level. So when we're talking about those, competing with them for project money, I guess, of competing for federal and our state money, and competing with New London, which can always, always pull the low-income out and stuff, cardinals, which always push us back. You know, it's our, when those, you know, people are looking in Washington or Hartford, where to put the money, and we can't really claim as much need as some of these inner-city, you know, people, I say cities, with inner-city problems can.
Thank you. Yeah, it's getting worse.
I'd like to talk about the town budget. It's one of my favorite subjects. Is there some way that we could, we could synchronize, orchestrate, or in some way, plan the budget process so that the actual budget, the approved Board of Finance budget, comes out and is available sooner to the public and to the press, so that the information can be disseminated to residents in town? So they have some lead time to make informed decisions or questions to their appropriate bodies of things that they're not sure of or would like clarification, to be more specific. I have the first copy of the budget that was available. Georgia was very, was kind enough to staple it for me at hand at the time. And remarkably, I'm ten, in the article that will appear in the Haddon Bulletin, I'm $10 off of the actual budget. Somehow, I missed $10 in the recreation department. I got no help from anyone, it was basically speculative. And it seems like a fairly unfair way to disseminate information that's so important to have a guy like me come up with numbers that I think are the best possible estimates. We, the people, this town has one news vehicle, whatever you might think of it. And to get it printed in time to be delivered to people, there's a press deadline of around the second Wednesday of April. The budget wasn't completed by that date, actually, but it just barely. But nothing was made available till today, so I really didn't know what the numbers were. What can we do to back up the process a little, so that the document is finalized by, let's say, the first Monday of April, second Monday of April, make other checks?
I think the answer to your first question is yes. Okay, and the answer to your second question is we have to revise the charter. The charter is very specific with regard to the timeframes that are required by both for the finance and for Selectman. And, well, Harlan, if I could get you to kind of embellish that a little bit, what your limitations are of being able to move the process along?
Yeah, I don't have any of those dates off the top of my head, but I know that we, the dates are dictated by the town charter, and the Board of Finance, in conjunction with the Board of Selectman, have worked hard to stay within those dates. And I think, you know, if the Bulletin has a publishing issue, I would think it is a big, important issue. And the budgets, it is what it is. It's where all the tax dollars go. So it would seem to me that it might be easier for the Haddon Bulletin to move its deadline and publishing than it is for us to rewrite the town charter. But we work within the town charter dates.
Now, we might catch a break, because there is a bill that's pending that would allow the towns to modify their charter without going in and doing a complete charter review. I'm not sure where that stands, and I'll have to talk to CCM and see where that stands. But if that's the case, then that would shorten the sessions and our ability to move in those directions, on those areas that really need immediate dramatic attention. Other than that, you are stuck with a process of charter review that is long and tedious and not without its problems, especially when we consider that any charter that is looked at, you're looking at the basic form of government. Without looking, when looking at a charter review, you must consider every form of charter, including the nature of the form of government. So I think that we, you know, we may catch a break on that, we may be able to push things along, but we are intending, hopefully, at the right time, to certainly take a look at the possibilities, strong possibilities, of getting into that charter and establishing some.
Well, I remember the last charter revision, we addressed that issue. We actually did move dates up, correct, Ed? We did move something up, because you actually.
Yeah, I think, I think the charter says no later than.
Right.
So that means that the Board of Finance could up it more often.
Right.
And get it done. I don't know what the other towns are doing to get this ahead of time. But I think Alan is right, that a couple days before the public hearing, that's a bit short for information.
Right, yes. I don't see it as a problem, I don't see it as a problem of dates, I see it as a problem of availability of the information prior to the hearing. Not as you're moving everything back. It's the distance between the time, between the availability of the information and when we have the actual hearing. It doesn't matter what the dates are.
To be more direct about it, is there is no information. And it was, to use, we will talk to reporters, you read the minutes of the meeting, if you want to know. But there's no, there's no spreadsheets, there's no data, there's just, someone motions to take $6 off of someone's copy of a budget. It's impossible to make sense of a $25 million, $28 million budget. The real problem is, if the budget were done by a certain date, so that it could be printed in its entirety, without any speculation, this is the budget, that would be what would be fair to the public.
With enough time before.
So it just means pushing everything back two weeks, means starting the whole process. If you can streamline it, you can streamline it, but no. There is no, I believe that the charter says a budget has to be ready in time for a meeting around March the second of May.
Well, there are specific dates as to when, what each, where, it has to come from the departments of Board of Selectman, to the Board of Finance, to the Board of Selectman. So there are specific dates. However, one of the problems that we found too is the state. We don't know, we're not getting revenue of information until very, very, very late. And as a result, we can't put it together until we get, and then they change it at the last minute. So we have to be sure we have good practical information to work with. Also, the school, the school, which we don't know what our ECS is going to be.
If Killingworth said, "We can't do it." Their budget was out, I had it for weeks before ours. It's in their website, three weeks before we even hand it. You know, if a little town like Killingworth can do it, or East Haddon can do it, why can't we do it? That's really what I'm saying, what's so unique about Haddon and its budget process? They can emulate what other towns who are used as our reference neighbors.
I'd have to, you may be right, and obviously, if you cite in Killingworth and East Haddon, you probably are right, but I did not know that they were that much ahead of us in putting their budget together, because I've talked to both Selectmen, and they're on the same timetable as we are, with regard to their angst about getting information. So I'd be interested to look at that and budget brought up, and we will. But there's no doubt about it, we would like to, I'm sure the Board of Finance agrees, we'd like to work more efficiently. We want to be thorough.
And these are not easy budgets to put together, especially during changing times in this kind of economy.
We have the unique needs as a town that we have to, you know, be careful that we fulfill. Our capital plan, for instance, takes a lot of support as to what has to go in there and at what levels, you know, what periodic timeframes. We have to make sure that we're identifying reasonably those projects that need to be taken care of, and those that are more of an immediate nature. I mean, so, you know, other towns don't have the, some of the other towns do not have the ancient infrastructure that we have, or the physical needs that we have with regard to capital expenditures. So I think, you know, just picking that as an example, where it takes a little bit more time for us to put together. I do know that from the very beginning, within the timeframe that we're asked to deal with, we're working 24/7. I mean, you know, Georgia and Board of Finance and Selectman, I can't tell you how many meetings, especially Board of Selectman meetings we've had on Saturdays and Sundays, I mean, it's just been, you know, incredible to get to try to get this done. So, you know, we certainly will, you know, look at it to try to make it more efficient.
I was just going to add, all of the Board of Finance and Board of Selectman meetings are, you know, open to the public, we encourage people to come. It is frankly very rare for a reporter to be there and taking notes and staying on top of our happening. So I, you know, we invite you to come and hear firsthand and report as soon as you can after that. That would be your deadline, that's how fast you can get that out, but you're welcome to come.
See, the other towns are more proactive. East Haddon, for example, sends out a budget in the mail to every citizen. So I think what Alan is saying is that with the website, with Excel files, and Georgia puts an Excel file together, if it was a way to get that information out before the last weekend, because obviously, we're saying the charter, no later than, that doesn't mean it can't be done before. So yes, reporters can go to meetings, but at the same time, if you have a website, if you have an Excel file, it should be something kept on the lab or of a couple people on the, like, I was privy to information when I was on the board, but I can understand the frustration of citizens who don't have access to that information, even if they attend the meeting, because they don't get a copy at the meeting. So I think if we were making an effort at least to communicate more, I think it'd be less frustrating.
The, I understand the budget is on the website.
It is today, yes.
Yes, which is, which is, on that note, if any of you have any influence, or anyone with regard to attending the budget meeting, the public hearing and or vote, that would be terrific, this year especially. We need all the input and all the confidence that we can get in the work that has been done. As I said, this was a, this was truly a difficult situation this year with regard to trying to maintain our balance, and we made some cuts in areas that were uncomfortable. We may have to make some cuts in other areas on the next page, because, you know, we're working with Board of Finance to determine that. But we have some special needs, and it's something that we have to, we have to be careful not to let lie on the page of the budget. We were spoiled for many years in having the benefit of the Connecticut Yankee tax income, which kept the tax bill rate at a very low rate. We did not take any of that income to put into our infrastructure. So as a result, long after the Connecticut Yankee has gone away, we still have the infrastructure problems, and we have to address them. And it's in order, not only in our basic safety and public courtesy, but moreover, for an ability to try to create some economic development. Without economic development, we are stuck with the basic residential tax quarters. I've said this before, it isn't, probably, you're probably getting tired and arrogant, but we have 44 square miles and have 51% open space. I'd like to stand up and correct it. I mean, it's like 24% to 30% open space? Including all from the, from the.
From the state.
From the assessors' rolls, everything, 51%.
I disagree.
Okay, take a look at that, that's relative, the numbers aren't good. And the rest of, whatever is not open spaces, 90% of it is residential. So that doesn't give us much room to work with as far as economic development.
Yes. I'll just move in here.
Oh, please.
A follow-up by your group there, the COG group. How is that going to affect the education system throughout the region? Is that going to be affecting where pupils have to move, we have to real allocate, or are we going to stay?
Not unless another regional school system is creative. And like East Haddon, for instance, is not a regional school system. If they determine that they want to marry up with another town, then of course, they have to go through some adjustments. We shouldn't be affected on the district level. The only thing that's going to affect us is a continual increase in what appears to be the ATM, which is the number of children in school. Killingworth has gone down dramatically, and we have continued to go up, and we have 56% of the children in school. Now, what that means is that when the Board of, excuse me, the Board of Education comes in with a suggested budget of an increase of 014, that relates to something more than 3% for us. So it's, that variance between Killingworth's kids and our kids in the numbers is dramatic, and I sense from talking with the superintendent that it's going to continue to become more dramatic.
Thank you. Any other questions?
This may not be the appropriate, but I'd like to talk about the Board of Education. The formula, the average daily membership formula, which guides our allocation of the school budget, is really playing big tricks on both Killingworth and on Haddon. This year, this fiscal year, we were the beneficiary of good tidings. Next year, we're going to get sacked by $0.5 million on a budget that's only gone up $4,000. Is there some way that the Board of Selectman can begin a dialogue with the Board of Education to modify that formula, or at least create something like a three-year rolling average? Because the effect of a secular decline in enrollment which were happening exacerbates the swings. They lost 150 people, we've lost 50, but Killingworth lost 100. So the percentage gets wildly disequilibrated, if that's a word of this. To smooth out those big $0.5 million bucks is a lot of money for a town. To smooth that out, would it be reasonable to discuss with them? Because I don't know that this was state law. If this is.
It is.
Every town, every school district has.
Yes, we're all regional, yes, all, every region, every regional district does, yes.
With no modification whatsoever?
I don't know. Modification comes sometimes at the last minute by the local government. So I think the, we were, the educational cost sharing alone went up and down twice in the last four weeks of budget preparation. We actually got more at one point in time and it was dropped down. So, and don't forget, it's spread over 169 towns. Yes, should something be done, yes. And that's why a bigger voice, the COG voice, will enable us to have our voice heard. But yes, your points won't take. Okay, we have time for one more question, if you'd like. Ed?
Just a comment. You had listed earlier a number of organizations in the town, which are volunteer organizations. And I certainly would ask that you add two additional organizations to that, because I think they serve the town in ways that a lot of people don't consider, don't think of them as volunteer organizations, but they serve the town in a very positive way. And that is the Haddon Democratic Town Committee and the Haddon Republican Town Committee. Because the job of finding good candidates to run for office. Because the job of finding good candidates to run for office in town is one that takes a tremendous amount of volunteer effort to pull that kind of thing together, which ensures that we have, you know, good candidates running for office. So I'd add those two to your list.
Your points will take, thank you. I will, I think that's an excellent, excellent suggestion.
The other thing I was going to bring up, I may, is, and I know you're aware of it, I imagine the rest of the Board of Selectmen is as well, but the federal government has a great, it's called the Great American Outdoors Program, which is interested in funding two recreation-type projects, and I may not have all the details right on this, in each of the 50 states. One of those projects that we'd like to see happen here in Connecticut is Rails to Trails for the section of rail from the Tylerville intersection with the Bridge Road to Marolus. There's also Crepo, Crepo, my understanding is interested in having a trail beside the rail from Saybrook. So that would basically put a trail from Saybrook all along the river to Middletown. Be a tremendous boon to this area from a point of view of tourism and recreation and bringing people into the area. When, you know, if this would get put together, and I think it would benefit all the towns in the area tremendously.
I think that idea has been really positive, and I think a lot of work, as you know, can be done toward that end. I would be really interested to see the statistics on how such a terrific recreational tourism opportunity would actually, dollars and cents, what we could bring in. Because I think those kinds of things will help us to, will motivate us to get those grants and get out there and get as much money as we can. So I think that's, I think your points will take, and definitely do what we can to identify those opportunities and work with folks who are trying to promote that.
Thank you. Any thoughts on this at all? Quickly, I think that's a great project. Very much in favor of Rails and Trails, that's fantastic. Let's see.
On a positive note, speaking of outdoors, I just wanted to cordially invite all of you, which I did send you an email, but in the audience. Citizens for Protection of Public Lands is having a picnic on Eagle Landing State Park on Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00. And we'll have hot dogs and drinks and salads and dessert. So everybody's invited, and we promise we won't talk about the budget.
Okay, is this on the value of Redrow Land?
It is, no, it is not, but we can walk up and practice the Rails to Trails if you want. It's on the Eagle Landing State Park.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to lose this. All right, thank you very much for all you're up with.